The House have for what?
All right, so it looks like it's the clock that first item is ordered and little.
United States of America and liberty public for which it stands. One nation, one home, into this world with liberty and justice for all.
Chucky, give it a shimmy next time when he gives you the whole thing.
Yeah.
All right, all right, first. Action, are we doing my, it's our review and approve the minutes from November sixth.
So moved.
Second, all right, all those in favor? I don't know, you need discussion, right? Is that any discussion on it? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, and we'll go on to members reports.
Everybody, the only thing I've got is people have called saying thank you that the instructions.
Chucky.
No, I shouldn't have blocked.
Oh. All right, so moving on and we'll move over to the town manager report.
All right, I thank you to those folks that already submitted names for our town report dedication and spirit of America volunteer award, but please continue to keep those coming. You can all or email the town office with those suggestions. C V at Franklin Savings Bank, which are today, very able to negotiate a four month C V at four five five A P R on that. Holiday strike plan underway still, if you would like to participate, you business organization, please let us know more of that will be going out. Any kinds of information on the program in the next week or two, feel free to reach out, that's here at the town office or here with me. If you would like to participate. The town office is going to be closed at noon on Friday with that crying dog. The Maine Animal Welfare has sent out new software web based programming to license dogs. I'm pretty good with the computers, but it's taking me fifteen to twenty minutes to license one dog. So I have told them I'm not licensing any dogs in the town, nor a dog until we can get it figured out because it's cost prohibitive to us and let's be honest. So they just blamed on the legislature for not funding an appropriate program, but anyway Sharon was able to facilitate lining up a train for us at twelve thirty on Friday. And I expect we'll take a very good amount of the afternoon up. Smithfield is going to come as well, everybody's struggling, it's not just us, but Smithfield is coming, we've invited Cayman. So we'll see how that goes, but hopefully next week we'll be able to start with some dogs. Honestly, if we can't cut that time down, I'm really not going to promote it and we're going to encourage people to go online and license their dogs because it's just. Not a great situation there in terms of that, and I think that the legislature is going to pivot on this and we're probably going to end up with a new system maybe next year, but.
Is it something that currently can you register them online?
Yes, it's a complicated system, if you're going to register online, you have to have a PDF of your radio certificate to be able to scan and upload and attach. For animal welfare to do it online, it's it's an old burdensome. System, let's put it that way, it's a nice plan I got for that system today, so Friday we're going to be learning about that. Nomination papers, those will be available on Friday and due back the second of January. Safety training update, I've been putting quite a bit of time into that because we just had a recent round of inspections that went well. You remember in early twenty twenty four as a result of April, August twenty twenty three inspections, we ended up paying off. Substantial amount of money relatively in terms of penalties there, so we've corrected all of that and had additional inspections and our voluntary request to. Improve things, and so they've been doing that, we're queuing up now for shape. And so I've got a big stack of binders and we're going to enhance what we're offering with these across the board for safety.
Equipment, town garage stuff, or what?
It's, I mean, it's across the board, it's bloodborne pathogens, so it's the computer monitoring your chair being good for your back, it's by extinguishers. It's how do you safely leave the building and when you leave this building, where do you go and who do you report to? And it's a lot of this common sense stuff, but I have to have signatures on paper. And one of the biggest obstacles to this has been the frequency of turnover and onboarding and to provide that training, it's eight hours minimum. For me plus another, and so it's just really difficult to do, but we're putting our nose to the grindstone and. We'll kind of do it and keep it going, Lord willing. So you have the Friday noon closure and then next Thursday, Friday for Thanksgiving will be closed here. Planning board ordinance revision, they started that last week to say that. It was productive, I would say is the biggest overstatement of the day. I did not feel like it was a productive section of the last meeting and I expect a draft for the shoreline zoning ordinance would come. Before the end of the week to forward that to the planning board for them to look at in December. And ideally those revisions would be ironed out in time for town meeting consideration. The subdivision will be looking at probably in June or the fall of the town meeting, but I think probably June is where it should be aiming. Just a reminder, the parking ban is in effect for downtown, we don't see anything on the horizon, but. From Main Street to Main Street, from Walt Street to Mechanic Street, midnight to six A M, you are not entitled to park overnight until March thirtieth. That is snow or no snow on the ground, you are not supposed to be parked there. Regionalizing animal control, that's not in your debt because that was late in the day, but. We had another meeting in county this afternoon, pretty much things are falling apart. Because nobody wants to touch the price tag of what it would cost, and they're just saying, don't make a town problem a county problem. And the towns just need to pay more. And so it's a pretty hard divide in terms of the folks that are at the table. And so it kind of is what it is, and so we're going to continue to keep a little eye on that, but. Right now, we're kind of all retrained, our focus on the shelter, which is in Africa. They have a warranty, I think thirteen dogs, they said, and the average length of stay is five months for a dog. And so that's not a very effective use of their space and they're targeting a four million dollar facility. Don't know where they're going to put it, getting a volunteer engineer, there are just a lot of unanswered questions. And a lot of like, why are we doing this coming out of the meeting today? So it was difficult to hear because it's such a prevalent problem and we're, we've been willing, we've been talking about. Clinics and things like that, so for us to be proactive and then to see that the organization, they're not really any like this shelter problem is going to be the next decade realistically, so. Frustrating there, but we're going to try and get them to do in the right direction, I told them that we'll be partners at the table, even if it's for funding, I mean, obviously it's something that we need and it's public safety, so. We'd be irresponsible not to, but you know, kind of treading water at the county levels today. Your fatowal road that is substantially complete, the Main Street water project is done just in time for the water district to award. A project for Upper Main Street at the foot of winding hill this way to Sergeant last week. I did attend the bid opening because of the issues that we had with the downtown. And if it was close, I was going to say something, but Sergeant came in a little over a hundred thousand dollars less than the next law was.
We might have paid a hundred thousand dollars not to have the same thing.
Yeah, so they really, really, really sharpened their pencils.
Kirby will have a power tag.
Which is good for the water district, it's good for our rate payer, ultimately the tax payer because we do pay such substantial amount. To the water district, but one of the things that we're looking at, we're going to talk more about tomorrow at road committee is. We have a cross corridor at the foot of the hill going down Upper Main Street. Before you check his field, the left is a cross corridor, it's pretty substantial and it needs to be replaced. And so if the water district has a project going on and the mobilizations included in that, maybe we could piggyback with their contractor to get that done in a cost effective manner.
I would think so, because that water pipe is aged. Aged, it's right under that and they had trouble with that years ago and passed in every other thing.
So we're looking to, we're going to get a price from, but there goes doing the water district project, it's not where we want to be, but that's what we're going to do. And have them work with Sergeant to give us a price to get across there. And I'm going to get the road committee's blessing tomorrow, but preliminarily it all very well received and a good answer and timing for that. Waste management fees, we just got our check for October, that was actually down over the same month year before. Just operational, but year to date, we're at eighty one thousand over where we were previous year. And well ahead of what was budgeted in revenue stocks, that taxation this year. Your upcoming meetings, my schedule is busy, I'm not going to library trustees tomorrow, but they're open tomorrow at three thirty. They're going to be talking about the regular stuff, but also about what they see as needs. And worthiness of investment in a library, whether it's on new law or any law, what they think is reasonable for, I've asked. I gave, I gave a list of questions initially to talk about. How much would they be willing to expend for exploration or site plan or building design? And then what do they think is reasonable for building altogether, things like that, so we should have some good feedback from them, hopefully through the summer meeting. Parks committee will have a meeting on December second, it's next Monday, that's going to be some straw work. Ideally to iron out their budget for next year, planning board on the twelfth, rec committee will meet on Monday the twenty fifth. At five, that is largely budgeted, but they're also going to be weighing in on the new job description. They've been floating around for community event planning engagement that is morphing around. Road committee has a very lengthy brief, but lengthy agenda for tomorrow. At noon time, select board, you're back here, and the Tiff is tentatively booked in for next Tuesday, I don't have anything, so I just have to talk to your parents, see what his pleasure is for that.
Okay, all right, so.
You know that road committee?
Road committee meets tomorrow at noon time, there's a lot to talk about and hopefully we will afford a amount of time.
So you want to select me in there?
No, but I mean, I'm not, you can go.
No, I don't need to go, no, I didn't, that's it, no, I thought you said something about just letting me be in there.
There, well, there, no, the road committee will be there, they've got a lot to talk about on for their agenda, hopefully in a short amount of time, and then we'll be bringing that back.
Oh, okay.
Oh, and then the line after that was the select board meeting.
All right, thank you, so the next item on the agenda is the discussion action, November twentieth, general warrant. Number twenty. General motion to approve.
Warrant number twenty in the amount three hundred and sixty four thousand, four hundred and ninety four dollars and five cents.
I'll second.
All right, so now all women, we'll go to any discussion, right?
What's, what was the Jonathan Wean project?
Jonathan Wean is two seasons of the podcast.
Which is greater, broke down, I'm going to run it.
The grader, not broke down.
I see. Okay, I see Ron grading that.
Ron did the grading for the rail trail.
Okay.
And then that, if we pay that and then that will be reimbursed through the A D B grant.
Sounds like a hell of a good idea.
The goodness common community placed.
That is the nonprofit organization you provisioned to.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's.
That's on your list, that we have to check for tonight.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everyone. Moving on to discussion action on airport warrant number. Just airport warrant eleven, there we go.
The commission to approve warrant number eleven for the airport in the amount of twenty five thousand, five hundred and eighty three, eighty three dollars and forty one cents.
Any discussion? I, I mean, how much of the seventeen thousand, one hundred and ninety one are we getting back for the taxi lane reconstruction?
Ninety five, ninety five percent.
We always say that, but like, I mean, it'd be nice sometimes if we knew like what we were actually having to pay for this, it's, I mean, I get it, like, it's ninety five percent is getting paid for, but it's still money that we're having to pay for.
Yeah, so that's nine hundred dollars for us, I had, I believe, in a previous financial report. With the total project cost product of taxi lane reconstruction.
Yeah. And. Card members. So I, I guess Bush talk repairs and terminal supplies, like, why is that card member services, what is that?
Because that went, went on the credit card, the town credit card.
Okay, and then the lawn tractor repair fourteen hundred, like, is that?
So that is the wide area mower and that pretty much was on its end of life stage. And so that went down to United Ag and Turf, which used to be him and Tractor in Fairfield, they've gone through it, they tried to repair it and pretty much they've said. Take home, put it on hospice.
You've got, you've got what you've got.
Yes, it's going to continue to blow black smoke and not much you can do about it until it's done.
Can't we just buy a new thing that can cut stuff, right? Can we just buy any machine that can do like?
Yeah, the town bought that for public works.
Can that be multi-use?
It could be, but the nature of the mowing at the airport is not that for this. This John Deere lawn tractor is the wide area mower, most sixteen foot swaths to keep everything down. It's a lot more that's used for golf.
Yeah.
Primarily, I, I mean, unfortunately, the, the financial position of the airport is that, you know, these people don't have money hanging around to even get a zero.
Yeah.
Not going to junk only because of the volume of mowing that we do, we go out and do mowing for. Eight hours with your hearing breaks, that's what you do and that's an expensive piece of equipment. So we're going to have to have some difficult conversations about that on the string and how we do that.
Are there federal regulated like length of vegetation that the FAA was going to require us have, or is that like their nice, because I mean, like the. Where the planes land is paved, there's no grass on that, so like.
So we mow back beyond the runway lights. The runway light and it goes along and we just keep that mowing along there and then we use the bush hog to keep the field down and then we bring. Lamberts come in and they actually hay the fields. So we allowed to grow, but we can't allow to grow, which you don't want the grass to grow on the shoulder of your runway either.
Around the lights and all that, and you have to deep that down.
I mean, we flat, we're on both.
Awesome, it's like a great use of money, all right, so any further discussion? Right, all those approved, yeah. All those in favor, rather, here we go, where's Matt, she's, that's everybody, moving on, all right, so. Next item is discussion action on the sewer commitment.
A motion to approve the sewer commitment in the amount of seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy one dollars.
Second, so motion is second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all of them favor? That's anyone? All right, um, next item is public comment. You guys are awfully quiet. You guys aren't. All right, so there's one on that, all right, so move on to discussion action on the fire pickup truck bid award.
Reserve on that or? No, we did not. I, we, we got in plenty of bids, the high bid was twenty five hundred, the low bid was five hundred, you can see that the five hundred wasn't out of the area, but when it was the twenty five hundred. We did not place a reserve on it because we always said we'd come back and say, yeah, we're not going to sell it or whatnot. I will have it open to the chief of the recommendation.
So the department would love to have seen more. And would love to put it out to bid again, but we have no reason to expect that the results would be any different. And that we can't put it on the lawn for sale and negotiate with some buyer that stops the height, so we should respect the bid process and take the twenty five hundred. And put it in the applied department donations account. That's our request recommendation. So that it could be spent towards another project someday, which it might be owed or whatever's coming down.
So we're looking for a motion to accept the high bid on this? I wouldn't, all right, and then, okay, so any further discussion? All those in favor? That's everybody. Those are some random amounts, like, that's.
They're jeopardy. But it means this amount is still good.
Okay, so next item is a discussion of code enforcement update junk carrier.
Yeah, so I mean, as you are aware, this has been a priority of board to see some of these land use issues get cleaned up. The new code enforcement officer has been working on this, since he's given this to me, we've. Send notices, we continue to see progress, we got a call late this afternoon that he needs to check out a property or remove them from the list, but anything that's in that color, the highlight color. Is something that he has been able to move the needle on in his short amount of time here, so this is what you've got. To see where refresh notices have been sent or he's been out to conduct site visits, all of that to me is encouraging. And I hope the same is for you. Thanks. I think the smile is satisfaction, but if you have any other feedback or whatnot, please let us know. A lot of the biggest obstacle for us is making contact with people. I would tend to add junk cars. Aren't hand defined certified by mail, no time to withdraw, this time we have to go to the post office. We're making everybody the most, which is encouraging.
Well, it's great, that's awesome to see, like, I'm glad that the new person's working with me. All right, so then discussion action on resignations.
When I send a memo out in your packet with regard to resignation and appointment, I made offers of going to the Calver, I've covered the Eric Calver and board directors. And the meeting on the sixth said quickly resigned on the seventh, and it seems to be background politics. Anyway, with that being said, for this one and next, my recommendation would be to accept the vice, the next item.
Okay, I was going to say, okay, so looking for a motion to accept the resignation? We have a second?
I'll second.
All right, so motion is second, any further discussion?
With the background politics, is that kind of?
Calverton's a nightmare, have you ever been to one of those meetings?
No. And that's kind of why I'm asking, are we going to be in the same boat if we appoint somebody else and the same thing happens, or is there a bigger issue?
Well, it's like all the towns come together and it's like Skunkie can just kind of soak.
Let me, I'll raise all of this sensitivity. This is a Nordwalt resident that once everybody was appointed to the seats, there was an individual from a different town that did not get elected, because there are elected seats as well. They were frustrated, their spouse conveyed that they were frustrated by the process they had selected. And then in essence, that after a period of time in service to the organization that they should have been elected. And that our employee who was a resident of Smithfield was appointed by the Smithfield select board to represent Smithfield. And they should have taken Nordwalt's seat, yeah, 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 and this guy just said, I don't have time for that, I'm leaving, so. I don't believe so, I've had conversation, well, I have not had direct conversations, but we've had indirect conversations with Ashley McDonald, who is the Smithfield representative. Who is supportive of the organization, who has support of our rec committee members, and I think. Here's about the kids and not about proceed to load on, which is encouraged.
But, yeah.
So, next item, Amy Downing, Smithfield representative for our rec committee, and then Bobby Joe, obviously is our program director, so.
Yeah.
I hope not.
Going to ask since we don't know if we're doing this.
Yeah. It's, people take it super seriously and others feel like it's.
Child never going to pay for your nursing home bills with the money that they make off of their stock.
It's not the vibe though, that is not the vibe they get at that one, those, it's, yeah, so, all right, so we've got a motion to accept the resignation. All those in favor? That's everyone, and then you're move, looking for a motion to accept. The appointment of Ashton McDonald to be our Nordwalt representative on the rec, I mean, on the Calverken board directors. You have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
You have a second, any further discussions?
One thing I'd ask, is there anybody from the Nordwalt that was interested other than Mr. Goth?
I asked Bobby Joe to look around and it didn't seem that way.
So we're doing our.
Yeah.
Off our tires first before we.
Yeah, all right, so without any further discussion, all those in favor? That is everybody, hey, so if you have two of these, we have a sign, just the one. There we go, all right, next item is add other business. What is, we have any other businesses?
I do, if someone would be willing to make a motion to add discussion action, community resilience partnership restoration to the agenda.
So moved.
Oh, so that's everybody and now we can discuss, right? Oh, yeah, everyone in favor, that's everyone.
So this is a step, back in March, we had an agenda item that said, let's look at these charts about. Solar and electric vehicles and climate plans, flood planes, things like that. And we came out with five or six different things that we said, okay, we want to focus on this. And it's kind of been a stalemate, it's helping, it's free to us. And this is the step that was focused, stale, like, you know, made aware of, so what I've done is we've used the template and then we've just plugged in what came out of that. Which was develop or enhance early warning systems and community evacuation plans. Enroll in the NFIP, which is flood plain insurance, community rating systems, a class nine or better to reduce flooding strength premiums. And to engage youth in resilience, clean energy and energy use reduction. I also missed install a renewable energy project on municipal property, so. The two in the middle were, if we have the funds to be able to do that, they break, the last one, Kelsey wanted to make sure they go on there according to their notes. And then the first one was to allow to control our abilities for wanting to, so kind of in my mind, we're looking at potentially just building, potentially a fire station. On one side, but also the airport community, funny, but gets done all day, so. This would allow us to explore anything with the funding, funding's also been increased to seventy five thousand, fifty thousand.
I thought we could do solar panels at the airport.
I was going to say, if you're going to just start selling them, fund themselves from that.
Well, we can't put solar and feed it back into the network because Madison Electric necessarily doesn't want it. And because we can't build the infrastructure to get it where it needs to go with central main power. So there's potential for us down the line, if waste management, if and when waste management starts to consume some of the electricity that they're generating on site. And that may create capacity in their three phase that runs across airport road for us to be able to feed it in.
Would that be a better fun, like, an additional funding mechanism for the airport to sustain itself if they had something like that there?
Obviously, yes, I mean.
That would be fantastic.
They're not required, they're T U C to carry that.
No, because it's a capacity, there's, they're saying it's capacity.
Oh, they say it's capacity, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and then it's cost prohibitive for us to put new lines across the child or whatever. But waste management has them just, you know, less than a mile from the gate.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
So we can interconnect to that theoretically, but that's a waste management, Madison Electric, airport town conversation down the line, if and when. Waste management does intend to use most of the energy that they produce on site for their expanded facility, but that's not what it is right now. So we're not in a position to speculate.
So they, they say they can't carry it.
Yeah, not right now, right, the lines are at capacity, so anyway, so those are the projects that are there, if any questions, I'm happy to take them, but. By approving this, it would authorize up to seventy five thousand dollars for. I mean, one or mix of any of these projects as we move forward and come back to you before any more.
What is our funding mechanism for that, like, where's, did we have a special pot to us coming out of, or?
Yeah, the governor found a special pot.
Perfect, all right, I like that pot.
You're still paying for it.
It's a pot that if you don't take it, somebody else is going to take it, unfortunately, that was the way the government creates pots, like.
Do you want to put that line, they, they put a brand new line in and they put that into. Waste management, because I think they, I don't think they got the follow, but they carried it, because someone, they'll bid on it, but you talk that big, big enough one. I don't think they want to do it though, probably.
I don't know, I'm not an electric engineer.
No, but I mean, because there's also, that, because that went in front of town meeting to be able to lease in. To develop a piece and everything, didn't it?
Well, it's part of like planning board, have they?
No, it went in front of town meeting, so they could lease some of, you know, leases to develop or the solar development.
We expanded the land lease to include solar. But then we passed an ordinance that said that you can't have solar on the ground, that's not too soon on site. So if we want to do that, we've got to go back and re-listen to the ordinance, unless there's a municipal exemption, which I don't believe that there is.
No, but that would be it, well, you ain't going to get that.
It's not going to happen that quickly.
No, yeah.
So we're looking for a motion to approve.
Approve the sign of the resignation.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So motion is second, all those in favor? That's everyone, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everyone.
We're not, sorry, so.
This is hard, like, I feel like I go through with that all the time, but I can't. I just know what I'm supposed to say, so moved, okay, all right, so, all right, the only other.
I just have one other thing, I probably should have put in my report, but I didn't, and I'm not sure what is. Out there or not out there, but some of you may have heard that the superintendent of schools had asked one of our school representatives to resign. Or be reassigned because they are employed by a transportation subcontractor for the school, so. Moses Bus Service um has a contract with the school and you uh superintendent interpreted statute to mean that. Even though they were an employee of the subcontractor, they should also be considered an employee of the school for purposes of education. Um they've got really, really complex, I had asked for case law, um there, our school representative is elected by Norwalk people and. Um so we ended up moving on that, ended up incurring a couple thousand, three thousand dollars in revenue connected to that. Um at the end of the day, we ended up issuing a cease and desist order, assuming they had a new school, um which seemed to be effective. Um because then it was punted for the chair of the board, the chair of the board, they called the issue of determining whether or not the employee of the subcontractor shall be considered an employee of the school. Um the superintendent sent, and the chair sent it to the full school board at a recent meeting. And it was a split vote. Uh so, just a second, so the director in question refused himself appropriately, but then it got down to, I think it was eight to seven. And rather than watch it go eight to seven, she cast her vote eight to eight and then forced the chair of the board to cast a vote. And it was nine to eight to declare her not an employee of the school district, uh so.
Well, she still wants to be on the board.
Yes, and still wants to be employed, it was, it was very difficult, I kind of get it. There were complaints based upon the employment that the school ended up maybe were reaching on, um the long, short bit was that. We prevailed, as best as one could say, um the unfortunate thing is that if one person changes on that board, we could be back in the same situation again. Um and, and the responsiveness, not from the superintendent, but the council at the school, um was nil, you know, I asked for. Um case law or any sort of precedent that had been set that said, you know, if you're a subcontractor of the school, that you could be an employee under the definition of education employee. None of that was provided, no explanation of anything was provided, it just kept stalling on, um so if it's frustrating is that it is that we're gonna be spending three or four thousand dollars. Um it's important that. People understand why we did it, um but also that, you know, we need to hold our school board directors accountable. Um when you vote, so.
Yeah, I, I, I guess like, for, we, you mentioned that if some seats on that board change, we could begin this again, like, they could make this a vote again, or?
So right now, the, the, the call was necessary for conflict of interest, do you believe that this person have conflict of interest or is employer is really? They, by nine to eight, they said no, but if one of those switches. Then it could be nine to eight the other way and there's no legal result, so we've just invested all this money, the bright side is that we have the injunction, we have the paperwork to report if that happens.
Yeah.
Cause that was all wrapped in the pipeline. Um before they, I would argue, coward out at the last minute, but um no, if that switches again, we're gonna be right back in the same situation.
So like, were we, weren't hitting like kind of this gray area, I mean, I work for a company that sells food items, if they are providing food to the school. That's some sort of contract, can they then argue that, or someone who like is a vendor of some sort, is this, I mean, like, is this gonna be something they're gonna keep trying to do just because they using it, they don't like someone that we've elected? And or how do we make it so that?
That's a real difference, but a kid get kicked off the bus, probably.
I'm not reading it as a specific.
Like, like, that's what I mean, though, are they gonna be able to make personal vendettas, are they gonna be able to find another loop?
It's possible, but I am here. And I obviously had talked with the chair of this board at the time to make sure that if I kept it under five, that I was gonna be okay. That our elected officials need to know that as long as they're within the confines of the law, the people put you in, that we put you in, we're gonna defend you. And it's a shame when our own school department, that's in that position, have to do that.
Send them the bill. Send the label. If they can't provide justification of why he decided to do that in the first place, send them the bill. I was running the bar.
I'm not opposed to that, I do think it was kind of frivolous and punitive and it forced our hand to have to do that, like, I mean.
Huge big words.
It was crappy and they didn't, they shouldn't have done it, but, but, I mean, I, we can send it, I hope we have any sort of ability or it's gonna cost us another three thousand in legal things to submit that to them, but.
Oh, no, I'm worried a lot of it.
I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't, just because it seemed like it was so frivolous, like, and baseless, so.
Yeah.
Keep in mind that they voted more than once on the Indian. It didn't go the way that some people wanted it the first time and.
They come back.
You wait a little while and you bring it back.
Yeah.
How long is uh her term?
Three years. Not to mention that she was elected in March, disclosed her conflict of interest as a driver for contractor that wouldn't be voted on transportation issues. And this is not the first term that the director has served.
Well, and I, I think I saw that someone else. Was in the same position and it was never an issue, someone else used to work for Mozer's and served on the board.
Yeah, there's, there's a number of potential conflicts that would be before the board.
Yeah, there needs to be continuity, if you're gonna do those type, types of things, like, and if they're not. Evenly spreading their rules that they're coming up with, then we need to.
Helps hard enough to find them now, if it's that and.
Well, I, I mean, if it's this hard for someone to get, we have a hard enough time having people like run for those positions on the boards and, like, and if they're being treated like this.
Yeah.
Then it's, you know, then what, what are they, who are they gonna be stuck with, so I mean, that's, I mean.
We're gonna break it up to the next meeting with a full board.
You apply there.
What, right in the lab in the conversation, anyway.
I would make motion to write a letter.
I'm.
And send the bill, I mean, they're probably going to ignore it, but. Doesn't hurt to say, hey, we put in this effort to protect our.
And burn clarity to the situation.
Yeah, and now it didn't go anywhere, so we.
So.
I reported through a second.
Okay.
And then I, I would say don't push it after that, you know what I mean, but it doesn't hurt to say.
Alright, so that's motion is second, um any further discussion? All those in favor of sending the letter? That's everyone, okay.
So now the motion to adjourn.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Alright, this motion is second, all those in favor? That's everyone, meeting adjourned.